All right, everybody, I'd like to call the city council meeting to order and ask you to all please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Molly, if you'd be so kind to help out with the roll call.
Yeah, sure thing. Alderperson Henry?
Here.
Alderperson Schaefer?
Here.
Alderperson Grimmer?
Here.
Alderperson Price?
Here.
Alderperson Iker?
Here.
And Alderperson Valde and Alderperson Dean are excused this evening. Mayor Atwell?
Present.
Administrator Hafner?
Here.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to number four, approval of minutes of December 5th.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. All right, on to number five, City of Delafield citizens' comments. Any citizens' comments? Seeing none, citizens' comments are closed. You have anything, Mary?
(laughing).
Okay, sounds good. All right, six, consent agenda. A, approve agreement with Magna Assessment Services Incorporated to continue providing assessor services to the City of Delafield for calendar year 2023 and 2024.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Comments wise, it was a very smooth reassessment here.
Yeah, I thought they did a wonderful job. Good communication. I heard lots of positive responses from citizens that came and met with them or called them. Few times, you know, they maybe took a delay in getting a call back, but I mean, all in all, I thought they did a really good job.
Oh, they did. Very nice try.
And a citywide reassessment here on top of it. All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. Okay, we're on to number seven, A licenses. Nothing, Molly?
Nothing.
Okay, we'll move on to B, planning commission, Mr. Iker.
All right, we did have a meeting, let's see, do we have a meeting? We did not have a meeting since our last council meeting, but we've got some business to follow up on, which is something that we approved unanimously for recommendation to the council. And this is the zoning code text amendment to allow for a conditional use for event facilities outside similar, not similar to, but exactly like what's going on at the Rustic Manor for the last several years. Some of the catalysts for this is the idea of what has been going on around them as far as zoning discussions, changes about what might be happening, and also just a request by the applicants, the owners of the Rustic Manor about whether or not it needs to be so specific. Currently, they're working under a conditional use permit based on a bed and breakfast option, meaning they need to be residents, and based on the success of what they've been doing, and lack of any issues of note in the past almost decade, we felt it reasonable to entertain the idea that this might be something that could translate into other areas of the city, but it's extremely, this is extremely restrictive, and would, you'd have a hard time finding a spot where lightning like this could strike again. It could probably make it fit in one or two really tight areas in the city, but anyway. I don't know if there's any questions about what they're asking to do or not.
There was some discussion, I think at one of the meetings where you were talking about sewage and water. Did that end up getting, I'm sorry, did it end up getting specific in the language?
Yes, those are part of the, I believe that those are part-
I believe it was both.
I believe, I believe both sewer and water are part of the restrictions for this.
Okay, I apologize.
Yeah, there was one that might, might have, was discussed being left off, but it was not. So you need a certain amount of space, you need to be ag land, and you need sewer and water.
Okay.
So that does make it rather restrictive, but you could figure it out if you really tried, but it's just, it's, the fear was that, not fear, but the possible ideas against it would be that you don't want bans setting up in areas where you'd have right next to houses and that, and that's currently not what we have. However, this would enable them to continue doing what they're doing without needing the bed and breakfast type of contingency, should even the area next to them turn into housing later. They wouldn't be kicked out either, so.
Seems really well-written, well-defined to accommodate what we want without opening the door to something undesirable.
That's the idea.
I would agree.
So I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance number 809 as recommended by the plan commission.
I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. You are all set. Any questions? Or you know where you're going? Okay, Merry Christmas to you guys. Okay, C, Lake Welfare Committee.
Well, and to finish up, we do have a meeting on Wednesday for plan commission.
Oh, there you go.
And there's a, we're going, again, we're maintain, we're going through the list of things for consideration by the economic development team, the focus group, and there's a couple items in there regarding possible change of zoning considerations for different areas of the city.
Land use.
Land use. Sorry, yes, land use, land use. Thanks, Mayor. So just, everyone, if you haven't signed up for it online, you can get the notifications about what these meetings are, otherwise just look them up. So we, we're going to continue through the list.
Yep, and we're almost done. We've only got the east side of downtown, and then we have the Benkowski property in the northwest corner, and then we are done.
Yep.
We've made it completely around the entire city and reviewed land use, so.
And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Okay, 7C, Lake Welfare Committee, Mr. Price.
Yeah, Lake Welfare met last Wednesday. We had three items that was on the agenda. We're looking for areas of, areas of reducing the cost of dredging coming up. We discussed the sewer pack report again, looking for possible projects that we can get involved in to try and maybe make a difference upstream, try and keep the stuff from coming into the lake. The last thing, and an interesting one too, is we found out that Nagawaki boat launch is going to be closed several times during the summer, and it'll be, all the launches will be closed in the middle to late September when everybody's taking their boats out. So we're going to probably have to have some kind of a communication to get people over to Bleaker Street to take their boats out because they won't be able to do that. During the summer, there'll be a couple of times where half of it's closed and half of it's open, so that should be okay. But they're gonna, sometime in later September, they're closing it all for some major repair of the, of the pier. So we'll have to get some more details on that. We'll be coming back to you soon if we have all the actual dates, and then we can start putting that maybe in our communicator in July or something so people are aware of it. So, that was it.
Sounds good. That's a good point, to write an article about that in the July communicator. That'd be very helpful.
A lot of people will be upset when they can't get their boats out.
Well, it's one thing, well, if you know in advance, you can try to make alternative plans. If you don't know, much more difficult.
Work barges too, coming in and out at that time.
Okay, we'll move on to D, Park and Rec. Tree Board, Mr. Schaefer.
No meeting since our last meeting.
Okay, E, Public Works Committee, Mr. Grimmer.
We had a meeting a couple weeks ago, gave advice and direction on the conceptual plan for the Delafield Parkway development, and also discussed a mailbox on Nagawickapath to make it more visible, otherwise fairly uneventful.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to F, Delahart, Mr. Iker.
Last meeting was just our Christmas party. I was a little bit late, but I'll just put a pitch in for Albrecht Sundry. If you're looking for turkey feast for gathering, they're, they're crazy good. But the other news is that the transition from our treasurer, Rose, to, and finance director, to Erica, is almost complete. So we'll miss Rose, but she's served us very, very well, so we wish her good luck.
Thank you very much. Move on to G, Police Commission. I don't believe there was a meeting there. Each Library Board, Ms. Henry.
We did have a meeting, but I was unable to attend, so I refer you to the minutes.
Sounds good. I, Zoning Board of Appeals, I do not believe there was a meeting. We'll move on to J, Promotion and Tourism, Mr. Schaefer.
We met with the Friends of Lappam Peak, got an update on their fundraising efforts for the Lappam Lodge. They're over 2 million now to their goal, so they're planning to start construction in May of '23, and promotion tourism officially informed them of our donation to the, to the lodge fund and coming from the tourism tax, and that we would be giving it to them like the state distributes grants. As they are in construction, they provide us with invoice of work that's, you know, that they're being billed for, and we will apply the funds toward that. So we're not just writing them a check, we're actually going to apply it to expenses that have been incurred. So keeps everybody, keeps everybody transparent and honest.
Sounds like a good plan. Can you remind us of the dollar amount?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand.
Yeah, 25 was budgeted in 20, 22 and 25 is budgeted in '23.
Got it. All right.
That's it.
Thank you very much. K, Lake Country Fire Rescue Commission, I don't believe there was a meeting. L, Lake Country Fire and Rescue Board, Mr. Grimmer.
No meeting, no report.
M, Other Committees and Commissions and Boards, Dear Management Committee, Ms. Henry.
Oh, we have a meeting tomorrow.
Sounds good. Hearing this council chambers?
Yes.
All ready, we'll move on to eight, Unfinished Business. A, update and possible discussion regarding Lake Country Fire and Rescue funding, fire fee development, and possible referendum for budget year 2024 through 2026.
Yeah, last time that I discussed this with the council, we had talked about that there was three communities that were going to be having meetings that are elected officials, that the fire chief was going to present to them the, the logic behind going to a universal fee where all communities are paying the same amount per household. In the words of the, the fire chief, those meetings didn't go very well. The three communities generally objected to the concept of them paying more than what they currently pay in exchange for other communities paying less than what they currently pay. I guess not a huge surprise for sure. And then you may have seen in the newspaper that the town of Delafield now has reversed course and is talking about going to referendum, and they've asked their staff to put together a draft referendum that they can look at in January for consideration of possible referendum in either a spring referendum, spring election, or a fall election, that hasn't been determined yet. It was a little bit unclear in the newspaper what dollar amount they were looking to go with. It's my understanding that they will essentially be proposing their own budget, which is less than what the fire board has determined there needs to be. I did have a call into Dan Green, the administrator at the town of Delafield today, but was unable to touch base with him. But we are meeting as the administrators with the fire chief tomorrow, and certainly will have more information from that meeting.
I think I read or heard, so hearsay, memory, is that they were considering, the town was considering either a $500,000 or $1 million.
Yeah, and I'm not even sure what that means because their, their costs certainly isn't, aren't going up by that much.
I think they're looking for final, the increase, the final 2026 number, that's what they would bump it up to, and thoughts that the $500,000 would have a better chance of passing, which is two-thirds of what their commitment would have been under, under the formula laid out, if my math is correct. Because in 2026, their cost would be 1.7, and their cost right now is roughly 560. And so if they would increase it by 500,000, that'd be at a million, million one, which is roughly two-thirds of that 1.7. Does that make sense, Tom?
Yeah, well, I mean, we'll check the math a little bit. I think that 1.7 is what they would have paid if they would have went to the universal fee. I think if we stay with the existing formula, and I might be wrong, I think if we stay with the existing formula, that they're more at like 1.5 for 2026.
Okay. Well, yeah, no, you're right, 1.5, but it's still two-thirds.
Okay.
Because they'd go from 560 to 1.5, so roughly, if they did that, which means they would be funding that final 2026 number 66% of it. And if the city of Delafield did that, we would be at 1.8 instead of the 2.7. And you can check my math on that, too.
Yeah, so with that being said, I mean, if they, I think they're going to sort things out here before their next meeting in January, but if they do decide to go towards referendum in January, we would still have a limited window here to follow them with the, either with the same dollar amount or our own dollar amount. It would be, it would be problematic if every community comes up with their own dollar amount. That doesn't get anybody anywhere.
Well, their thought, I shouldn't speak for them, but from what I've heard, again, they're looking at what they, they're simply looking at what they're willing to pay for services and what they're, I don't want to say afford, but what they think that the taxpayers will, are reasonable, a reasonable dollar amount.
That might get approved.
That might get approved, yes.
So if that would happen, they would basically back into a number, saying, okay, instead of a 24, we're going to hire, we could hire 21, you know, something like that. You just have to deal with it.
Right, it'd be here, fire board, here's what your budget is, reduce your number of new hires appropriately, and do the best you can.
Right. To be, someone, the, based on how the budget works, we, someone would end up being the, the gating item. That would be the lowest common denominator would set the budget based on what's been approved. If you're going to hold yourself to the referendum of the people, right? I mean, if, if there's a number that's set out based on the funding formula, where this is your share, and you say, we're only willing to go to two-thirds of that share, then the likelihood of a budget passing for others carrying on larger portions of that share starts to get really-
I don't think anybody's thinking anybody would take on more than their fair share.
No.
I think the town of Delafield is realizing that what they're doing is effectively trying to set the budget for everybody as, as being a lower number.
That's kind of what I was saying. Okay, well, I'd be interested to see where that, where that goes and how.
And in the town, oh, I'm sorry.
You know, a translation of, because we, we do have to work with what the, you know, the heaviest weight is to carry. And so I'd be interested to know how to translate that if we needed to react in a similar fashion to a similar type of referendum to put in front of the public to say that this works, as opposed to being in the same situation in August of next year, going into 2024. So that doesn't give us as much time in January, right? Do we have two meetings in January? We have one.
We have one, and we would need to approve the, if we wanted to be on an April ballot, we'd have to approve the language at our January 16th meeting. We could potentially call a special meeting maybe a week before that, if need be.
I, I think that's, might not be a bad idea, depending on how realistic things look, right? I mean.
I think what would, what's probably a good plan would be for me to understand what the town is doing, if they're going to aim for an April election, and if they are, then I think it makes a lot of sense for us to try to be in the same ballot. And if that proves to be the case, then I can, you know, contact the council and try to arrange a special meeting in early January.
And in defense of the, the town, I'm not trying to imply anything other than they're looking at a price point they think is palatable to the voter.
And Tim, you, you were talking about how someone can set the budget and potentially cause other people to pay more, but I mean, in effect, if, if we have some communities go to referendum, and at least one of those communities' referendum fails, and if the governing body is not willing to overturn the referendum and move forward anyways, we're going to be set at what the original agreement says, which is, you know, CPI plus 2% is all you're going to get.
I, I get that.
How does, how does the fire fee that we, that we talked about, how does that affect the town of Delafield? Would that increase or decrease there overall?
So when you look at the ultimate build-out, which is the 2026 year, under the current formula, they pay, they would pay in 2026 a little over 1.5 million, and under the fire fee, all of their homes and businesses would pay a total of about 1.75 million.
So they're going, they're going to go to a referendum to put a fee on. It's not a referendum to stay in the levy.
No, they're doing a referendum to increase their, my understanding is they're doing a referendum to increase their levy limit.
Their levy on.
Yeah.
Well, you could do a referendum for a fee as well. It's the community's choice on how they, if they choose to go off referendum, and then how they do it, whether to adjust the levy limit or to introduce a, a fee. It's the community's choice.
Yeah, I, I think the best course of action personally is to, instead of speculating on what they might be doing, or them speculating on how might, we might respond, do what you can to stay in touch with them, Tom, and if, if, if there's something that seems reasonable that we should try to be a party to, to reinforce, or check to see if it's a good idea, we should have that special meeting before the January 16th. If, if, if the appropriate action is even possible, maybe one in three chance that we should try to get a referendum on the April ballot, we should prepare for that, in my opinion.
That makes sense. And, you know, the, the position that the town has been taking, from what I'm hearing, is that, you know, Lake Country Fire and Rescue is getting seven new employees next year, and the indication that we're receiving is that will correct the brownouts, and we won't have the brownouts, we won't have the station closures. And so if that occurs next year, why can't that be the level of service we provide, at least for a couple of years? Why do we have to continue accelerating that, the budget at a significant rate as opposed to a more modest rate?
And I think that should be our focus, solving, solving the immediate problem. And then these other, I'll call them add-ons, wish lists, expansions, is a whole different story.
Agreed. Yeah.
We still have to fund at least what we just approved for the next year, right? Because that was just a one-year contribution on a fund balance, and then to keep that level, we've got to increase that the following year. So we'd have to at least keep that in there, correct?
Correct. Plu, I mean, plus CPI, plus they, plus we could accom, accommodate CPI plus 2% on top of that without affecting our levy limit, but yes, we would have to approve at least the same amount. That's, I mean, that's the default, is the same amount if we can't get a budget approved essentially. Remember, if we approve that again next year, it would be approved as traditionally intended with the, the pot for capital going towards capital and the pot for operating going to operating. So that's why it becomes a problem to retain those firefighters that we hired. I mean, you can't just keep, you can't just keep putting your capital funds on operating unless you never plan on buying new trucks or equipment anymore.
And we ordered a new truck.
We got a big ladder truck that we have to pay half for coming up. So I'm sensing the consensus is, you know, work with the, the chief and the other administrators, especially the administrator from the town of Delafield, understand what they're doing, and if they are moving forward with a referendum for April, that we at least schedule a special meeting and have a regular meeting where we can at least vet out the, our option to, to do the same. Yes.
I think so.
All right, fair enough. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to nine, Mayor's Report. Mayor has no report. 10, New Business. A, Discussion Regarding the Transition from Waste Management to John's Disposal Services as a Solid Waste and Recyclable Collection Contractor for the City of Delafield, as requested by Alderperson Valde.
Yeah, this is an item that Jackie did ask on last week Thursday, I believe, to have on the agenda. I just think she wanted to see that the communication is out there. We did get the frequently asked questions document out. We are being, we are under heavy call volume with regards to people asking questions, concerns, complaints about the garbage, but we are, that wasn't unexpected. I would say perhaps it's a little bit more heavy than I was expecting, even though I was expecting heavy, but we are dealing with it. We expect that to go into early January and then hopefully sell down a little bit. But what, what's everybody- But what's everybody else hearing as far as from your constituents?
Getting a lot of questions, but the information you provided was right on. It's really helpful to answer those questions.
Good.
Yeah, kudos to Molly for replying to, quickly to one of the emails that I got and that Kent got. And thank you for the call.
My, my subdivision got their bins today. And the, actually the communication that's attached to them, it's a weatherproof flyer holder. And there's three sheets, one with the calendar for next year, one with, let's see, maybe there's just two. But they, it gives you lots of different, very concisely, it's not filled with lots of words. Tells you what's going on, how to, how to work the carts, who to contact. There's a QR code, there's numbers, there's websites. I mean, it's, it's so far it's been communicated well and hopefully delivered. The only open question I, I've been asked is, what about our blue bins from waste management? So we're looking for that as a follow-up sometime before the end of the year.
So that's in the FAQ. Waste Management has indicated that they are going to be taking the, the blue cans either on the last collection day or the day after the last collection day. I will say that there's concern about whether or not they'll follow through with that. But that's what they have indicated.
Yeah, that would make sense, just to pick up the garbage and then throw the bin in the truck and off they go. Well, then to have to come back a second time, that would be.
Well, I mean, those, those bins would take up a lot of the recycling space in the trucks. And it might make more sense to, as you can stack them, just have a special truck where you can stack them all.
We've had some, a lot of questions from one condo community in particular where, you know, the roads are fairly challenging.
Yeah, and I don't know if they're one of them, but I know our primary contact at John's, his name is Nate. He has been meeting with condo associations, coming out, looking at their roads and giving them advice on, yes, we can get our automated truck through here, no, we can't. And if we can't, you got to either wheel your carts all the way out to here or else, or else you got to do the subscription service.
What's his name?
That's a good solution.
Nate Austin, yeah.
We have challenging roads in my neighborhood as well. And I got, lobbied everybody, all 20 houses to sign up for the premium service, problem solved. So working on the same thing with that condo community.
Yeah, good.
It would totally solve the problem.
The biggest issues I got on phone calls would be they changed our date. So we're not a Tuesday and now we're a Thursday. Oh, I'm used to a Tuesday. I think it's a Thursday.
Just make sure we're on the same page. Thursday, if you are automated, if you pay the subscription service, you'll be Friday. Did you catch that?
Oh.
And then, yeah, that's in the FAQs too. So totally different equipment that they use. So yeah, Thursday will be the automated roadside collection. All the up the drive will be on Friday.
You want to keep the big trucks out of your neighborhood, get everybody to sign up for the premium service.
All right, we all good on garbage?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to 10 C, discussion, possible action regarding the amendment to lease agreement for a ground space lease with Cell Co. Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless as successor to Prime Co. Personal Communications Limited Partnership at the Cell Tower site located at 3820 Kettle Court East. Mr. Hafner.
Yeah, we skipped B so we can come back to B. But with regards to C, if you remember, we had a lease agreement with T-Mobile that we approved back in August. This is very similar, except for Verizon went a different direction with the negotiations. What I offered both of them is there are CPI clauses and highest rent in the area clauses that were in the past leases. Initially, they both wanted, they both wanted us to reduce our fixed escalator from 15% to 10% and get rid of those clauses. I told them that we can do one or the other with either increase the escalator and get rid of the clauses or keep the escalator the same and, and, and keep the clauses. T-Mobile had elected to keep the fixed escalator at 15% every new term and, and keep the clauses. With Verizon, what we've negotiated is to get rid of those two clauses and increase the fixed escalator to 20%. Any questions on that?
Otherwise, we're looking for a motion to approve, correct?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the lease agreement updates to the Cell Tower lease agreements.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. All right, we'll move on to 10 D, approval of vouchers payable report.
I'll move to approve the voucher.
I'll second.
Great, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, passes. All right, on.
Yeah.
All right, on to number 11, reported city officials.
Kent, do we want to do 10 B?
Oh, did I miss B? Oh, I'm sorry. We'll go back to 10 B. Discussion possible direction of action regarding the consideration of honoring Ed McLeary's legacy with the city of Delafield by naming a building, street park, or other city's facility a memoriam.
Yeah, so with everything that Ed has done for the city, it crossed my mind that this might be something the city might want to consider doing. I was also approached by Lynn Holton. She had the same idea and asked if the council would consider naming something in Ed's honor. And so I thought I'd put it on the agenda tonight for at least an initial discussion on the council's thoughts.
Didn't we have a committee formed or was that on Park and Rec? For the naming rights for various park shelters or swings or whatever the particular?
We definitely don't have a committee at the city level like that and.
No, but they developed some language in.
The parks did?
The Park and Rec did. So not trying to reinvent the wheel. Maybe they had, I don't recall it in specificity, but they did develop an outline of who essentially would be, what criteria should be met. Now, former mayors, I think they get in regardless, you know, that their service is, is already apparent. But what, those are, I don't know.
So, you know, we could, we could look for that policy and see what it says. But was that more for sponsorship naming rights rather than?
Yeah, it was somebody that came forward and want to rename Fireman's Park Baseball Diamond. That said, hey, my grandfather, who passed a few years ago, was a big supporter and played baseball all those years. And Park and Rec decided that while that is, you know, good and noble and we appreciate the support that was given to the Park and Rec in that particular field, that they needed to develop some more specific criteria to have a track record of service in order to reach that significant honor, which is naming rights.
So is that just existed in minutes or was a policy?
I think it was a policy, I think there was a subcommittee that put it together. Mike Burns might still have it.
You think it was part of Park and Rec?
Yeah, yeah. But I don't know how many, I mean, if, if there was an effort to, to, my opinion is if there were an interest in honoring someone, and Ed is, is worthy of that, I think there should be some parameters set up, I guess, for, for future honorees to say this is our guidepost.
That makes a lot of sense.
Or, or is it so obvious that it doesn't need that kind of?
We've got a, so a quick, two quick precedents I can think of are the Lois Jensen Park. She was a longstanding city clerk and I'm sure she did lots of other things on the north side of the city in the Paul Sandgren recreational trail, which heads south of, out of Cushing Park. But I do understand, and actually the park that's in my neighborhood is the Bostrom Park. And that's named after the father of the developer of the, of the area, which is, you know, was deemed appropriate for some reason in the late 90s. But I, I'd like to take a swing at coordinating those, the kind of the competing standards, like what the Park and Rec might have to say and what other people might have in mind for, for Ed. And I, I was kind of feeling this out a little bit more toward maybe a name designation for, for the facility, maybe the, the Public Works and the, and the Public Safety Building. Not necessarily a park or, or that. But, but I'd be willing to take a swing at budgeting out what some sort of an appropriate plaque and signage would be and, and also what that, what the area and the name designation would be and come back, you know, after, and talk with Park and, meet with Park and Rec too about it, see if it's stepping on anybody's toes there. Make sure it's appropriate and even talk to, you know, you mentioned the Holtons and maybe even Kelly and see what seems appropriate so that we're not doing something that either sets a dangerous, you know, odd precedent or maybe falls short of the mark. But I'd be willing to do that and maybe, and come back in January with some suggestions, if that makes sense, that would help it along.
It makes a lot of sense because not only is there a question of who should we honor, but then what kind of honor? I mean, it could go from planting a tree or naming, or putting a bench in place in someone's honor versus naming a building after somebody. And maybe, maybe I can ask around other municipalities and see if they've got policies that we could mimic.
And also I'd be curious about renaming. I know that Bostrom might be a good example. I, you know, I, I appreciate, you know, where that name came from. But is it an option to rename? Are you upsetting, who are you upsetting? Fireman's Park, you know?
My goal would be.
Well, Mr. Bostrom and the firemen.
Not everyone would agree. They're budgeting. We're taking the name, but you're getting an increase.
Yeah, not, not everyone would agree that I'm necessarily always diplomatic, but I'll look to see whose toes I can avoid stepping on and make sure it just fits right in. So, right, I'll, I'll, I'll come back with a proposal, how about that?
Yeah, sounds good. If, just, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but naming anything in a park is not the council's job. That falls to the Park and Rec.
Right. The council could only make a recommendation to Park and Rec Commission to consider something in a park.
And Park and Rec could only identify park targets, not buildings or streets or other things.
City could do streets, city could do buildings, city could do other locations that they control or own that are not parks.
Park and Rec has identified memorial bench locations. I'm not aware of anything beyond that, but it could, it could have been before my time, so.
And a lot of times those, I know in some circumstances, in specific cases, those benches were bought and paid for by that individual who it was named after.
And that's the way it should be, in my opinion.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's great and appropriate for a bench or a tree. I want to donate in remembrance and we're putting one in there anyway. But for someone of, who's, has a lifetime, maybe not a lifetime, but a significant part of their lifetime committed to public service, a bench just doesn't do it, I think.
No. I think there'd be a logical end proposal. I'll, we'll see what, like I said, I'll try and vet, vet stuff out and talk to the different groups and see what makes sense.
Sounds good.
I'll come, I will have a report in January.
And we own a bridge.
What's that?
Okay. So number 11, reported city officials, city administrator, anything else?
No report this evening.
City clerk.
Just, I'm not, I got the okay, but I felt like I'm not being heard. The spring election cycle has started. As of December 1st, the nomination packets can be cycled through and those are due January 3rd. I've reached out to all of the candidates that I know are completing nomination packets to let them know that I will not be around for much of the last week of December and to come to me with any questions or concerns, as well as anybody else who has picked up packets. I've kind of let them know to please hit me up before December 21st so that I can make sure to answer those questions timely. If anybody in here knows of anybody else who is cycling paperwork, who, you know, does have questions, please encourage them to get to me, you know, this week sometime preferably so that they're not stuck on January 3rd, 10 signatures shy of a full nomination packet. The communicator is approved and ready for print. I would expect to see that out the first week of January or earlier. I'm debating on the earlier. I don't know if the council has any suggestion on whether or not the, like, New Year's Eve weekend would be appropriate. I'm leaning more towards not. I feel like it would get.
It gets stuck in all the other stuff, the hustle and bustle. I'd have it delivered the week after.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you, thank you for your opinion, Kent, I appreciate it. That is all I have, unless anybody else has an opinion on the delivery date. Nope, okay. January, first week of January it is.
How many people have picked up packets? We have a lot of people involved or not?
Three. Three have picked up packets for what I believe is the District 4 area for consideration, so.
Okay.
And then the ones that I've emailed to the incumbents.
All righty. Okay, C, treasurer, city treasurer's report, furry to the packet. Council requests for future agenda items. Is there anything? Any future agenda items? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number 12. Correspondence from the town of Oconwalk and town of Merton Cooperative Plan. Any comments there, Tom, or just go ahead and read them?
Just go ahead and read the correspondence.
Okay. 13, matters of possible closed session. A, motion to convene into closed session pursuant to provisions of Wisconsin State 19.851C, considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation date of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, more specifically regarding the performance review and compensation of the city administrator director of public works. The council will reconvene into open session after completion of the closed session to consider the balance of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to move into closed session.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderperson Henry?
Aye.
Alderperson Schaefer?
Aye.
Alderperson Grimmer?
Aye.
Alderperson Price?
Aye.
Alderperson Eiker?
Aye.
And there will be, there's nothing else on the agenda after this item if we're still on TV. So we'll just come back, make a motion, and that'll be the end of the meeting. So we'll just come back, make a motion, and that'll be the end of the meeting.
Yep. Okay, we are back into, we are back. We'll go on to 13 matters of possible closed session. 13A motion to convene into, so you did that one already. Motion to convene into open session. Motion by alderperson.
Iker.
Seconded by. To reconvene into open session at 8:15. Rule call vote. Henry.
Aye.
Schaefer. Grimmer.
Aye.
Price.
Aye.
Iker.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, C discussion of possible action regarding the 2022 compensation for the city administrator, director of public works. Motion by alderperson.
Iker.
Iker. Seconded by alderperson.
Grimmer.
Grimmer. To continue and terminate, to continue and terminate the existing contract with the city administrator, director of public works with a percentage.
3.25% increase over last year.
3.25% increase in salary effective 1-1-2021.
Correct. Yeah, 23, yeah, 1-1-2023.
Oh yeah, they got this wrong here. They got 21, 23. Yep. Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions passes. All in favor. Okay, 14. Adjournment, having no further business, the meeting is now adjourned at 8:17 PM. Thank you everyone. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Me too.